Coming up next on Get Caught in a Net. You are now tuned in to Mind, Body and Soul with Annette. Where your host, Annette Harris, analyze intriguing life questions and concerns such as, do Christians suffer from mental illness? Have you wondered why they act abnormal? Or you may ask, what is really going on in their minds? Do you need an app? Well, keep listening for a biblical understanding of the psychology of the mind.
Great afternoon. Welcome guys to another wonderful segment of Mind, Body and Soul with Annette. I am your girl, your host, Annette Harris. I am the CEO of Get Caught in a Net Incorporated, your certified mental health ambassador, and two-time award-winning author of that bestseller, Surviving a Silent Heartbeat. Listen guys, I always tell you when it's around 12 noon Central Standard Time on a Wednesday, it's time for you to get ready and get caught in a net. I'm here. I'm excited because this is our third and final round of featuring distinguished author guild nominees in our Authors Unite to Get Caught in a Net segment. So before I get started, Lord, we thank you for all things. We thank you for blessing us and helping us, encouraging us, giving us wisdom and strength and to do your will. We ask that you would get the glory out of this segment and everything we go to say and do. In Jesus' name we pray. And the first part of Hosea four and six states, "My people are destroyed for lack of knowledge. Because thou hast rejected knowledge, I will also reject thee." And again, we're excited to be here. I'm gonna pull in my guests on this afternoon. Before I do that, I do want to encourage each of you to come on in, join us. If you're able to join us live here and maybe you can join us for a portion of the segment or the entire segment. But if you're not, you're also be able to catch us on various platforms, Instagram, YouTube, Facebook. We are under Get Caught in a Net, so you shouldn't miss us. And you can catch it in its entire team, watch the whole segment at the end on today. So let me bring in these beautiful queens I have on today. And you see them, they're in the midst of us. They are here. All right, this time, this time. How are you all doing on this afternoon?
Amazing.
Good, good, good. All right. Seems like everybody's good. Everybody's doing good. I am going to, I hit, you see in our midst, first of all, I have Fire Marshall. Fire Marshall is here. I love her smile. Beautiful. How are you? You doing good today?
I'm doing absolutely wonderful. It is so good to see you and so good to be here.
All right. Well, wonderful. Let's see, she is the author of Pornotry. Did I say that right?
Yes.
A New Dimension of Erotic Poetry. All right, y'all. I talked to her earlier. I said, this title, she said, you gotta have a little spice. So come on now, y'all. We gonna, we gonna jump in here and talk about this. But we also have in our midst, author Shontae Conyers. How are you doing?
I'm good and I'm glad to be here as well.
Good. I'm so glad to have you. So glad to have you. She looks like she has a baby face to me. My goodness. You probably get that all the time, don't you?
I do.
All right. And Dr. Sheena is my friend. She is back with us. How are you doing? You looking good?
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, all right. And you've been doing some stuff, my goodness, especially since last time we've had you on. She is always working, always hustling. Let me back up. Shontae's book title is Please Don't Say You Love Me. And being pretty is hard, hard work, excuse me. You know, when I, when I first saw that, I thought it said being petty is hard work. But I'm connecting all of that. Please don't say you love me and being pretty is hard work. Okay, yeah. That is very true, right? And Dr. Sheena's book, Turning My Pain Into Purpose, is that correct? That's the one? See, I had to ask her because she gets so many books. She has so many books. And I had to make sure we were featuring the right one that was actually nominated through Distinguished Authors Guild. So I wanted to make sure of that. But yeah, let's jump right in. I have given your, the title of your book, your name. So who wants to start us off by introducing yourself? A little bit of personal background to the audience, if you would not mind?
I can go first.
All right.
Of course, everybody knows my name is Shontae Conyers. I am a mother of two boys and a grandmother of, will be soon two. He will be born November 1st, but I also have a five-year-old grandson. I have two books, of course. Being Pretty is Hard Work and Please Don't Say You Love Me. I work during the day. I work for a prosecutor. And at night, I work for Chrysler. And then I also went to school. I have my bachelor's and I'm also in school to get my masters. And I am working on a third book that hopefully can be published sometime after the first of the year.
Okay, all right. You sound, now some of y'all are career authors. That's what I'm, that's what I'm seeing. Ain't nothing wrong with that, you know? But that's good stuff. Thank you for sharing that. And you are a busy woman as well, I see. All right, all right. Okay, who wants to go next?
Hello next. Hi, everybody. I am Sheena Gaddan, better known as the Lady Behind the Mask. I am the author of about nine books now. I am a speaker. Speaker. I'm an advocate for domestic violence. I have my own podcast, a mother of two. And of course, you know, my acronym, Dope, dedicated to other people empowerment.
Okay, all right. Love it, love it. And you know what? I want to say this. I appreciate you all, the three of you. And I'm gonna let Fire Marshall go next, but you are inspirational to others. And whether it's someone who is thinking about writing a book or, or other moms, you know, showing them that you can juggle, you can balance, you know, various things. So we appreciate that. I just wanted to say that. Fire Marshall, come on. Talk to us about you.
Hello, everybody. First of all, I want to say I feel so honored to be among such beautiful women and such powerful women. Fire Marshall, the writer of Pornotry, A New Dimension of Erotic Poetry. I guess I'll tell you a little bit about me. I'm born and raised in Gary, Indiana. And I was away for quite a while in the military and came back. I have written another book that was actually, that actually won in 2022 with the Distinguished Authors Guild called Released. And it was a book, an inspirational journal that was geared towards women who had been dealing with any type of abuse. And so during the pandemic, I think we all got a little bit bored. We had to be in the house. We could hardly go out. My recreation was going to the grocery store. And I started writing erotic poetry to my own surprise. I would write things and then I would sit here and chuckle to myself. And then one day, shared it with a girlfriend. And when she read it, she said, you cannot just let these things sit. You've got to publish it. So we talked through it. I was a bit hesitant about it for obvious reasons. I am in the ministry. I am ordained. And when we talked about it, we talked about the fact that it is entertainment. And there are people who appreciate this genre. And it is just another ability that I have to write. And so I decided to go with my pen name, Fire Marshall, which was coined by another lady who read some of my poetry. She said that I like to start fires. You will see on the pages of Pornotry that there are some fires to be had.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Look, you got me all caught up right in it. That's good stuff. But obviously, like you said, you started writing and then to your surprise, you know, this came about. That's amazing what, we have so much in us, you know? And even that saying, which is true, everybody has a book within them, right? Whether or not your writings are gonna turn into a book or not, it was, it was within you, you know, that passion. So yeah, you're making us curious today. My goodness. Okay. So of course, each of these book titles are very distinct. What was your process for selecting those titles, Dr. Sheena?
Well, Turning My Pain Into Purpose, it came, it was actually brewed after I was diagnosed with having a DVT and just walking around knowing that I could have died. And my spirit set in, why not take it and turn it into a purpose and be a visionary to give people a platform to share their story of what they maybe been, went through to testify to others of, you know, how they can turn it into a purpose. And in this book, it's about 40 different individuals that share their testimony of their journey of taking something and turning it into a purpose.
Okay, so sounds like you didn't say, why me? God, you took that to use it to help yourself and everybody else?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. And yeah, and that's not always easy to do, you know, situations we go through. You know, and I know that, you know, everybody goes through differently and they don't go through the same thing, you know? So that's beautiful though, because it helps us to open up our eyes and realize, you know, whatever it is we're dealing with, it doesn't have to, it don't have to end there. Doesn't mean that it's over, right? So beautiful. Okay. Shontae, how did you come about with your titles?
Okay, so Being Pretty is Hard Work, that title came about because of my life experiences. Sometime in life, like she said, she turned her pain into purpose, but a lot of us do not do that. Sometime our pain makes our heart ugly. When your heart is ugly, it also shows on the outside. So Being Pretty is Hard Work is basically telling a story of a young lady named Rebecca, who, you know, lacked family support, had a lot of issues within her life that turned her heart ugly. Yes, she was a pretty woman on the outside, but on the inside, she was bitter and cold and mean. And it's, it's to show women that you can clean up your outside. That means we can put, you know, add hair to make us be pretty and makeup. But if you don't deal with what's on the inside, it actually comes out just by either your looks or the way you speak to people or how you treat people, it comes out. And so Being Pretty is Hard Work, I just want people to know that it is when you're working on the inside and not the outside, because it's easy to dress up the outside and still be ugly on the inside. And so one of the slogans that I put with that was being pretty is not worth the work if you're ugly on the inside. And so that's how Being Pretty is Hard Work, just some of my life issues, Rebecca. It is based off a true story and Rebecca is me. And I just talk about some of the issues that I went through that turned my heart bitter and how I got close to God and started soul searching to heal from the pain that was brought on and how I overcame it and how God helped me overcame it. And so people don't even realize that being pretty, it comes with sometimes more pain than it does pleasure. It attaches you to things that you don't want to be attached to and you also attract things that you don't want to be attracted to. And so I just touched base on that in Being Pretty is Hard Work. Please Don't Say You Love Me came from a divorce that I went through. It was also during COVID. And so I decided to write because those are, please, I mean, I, Please Don't Say You Love Me, telling somebody I love you, those are words that are used very loosely in this world. And there's just different levels to love. You can love somebody but not be in love with them. I kind of touch base on what the Bible says about love. And so I just talk about how somebody can tell you they love you and still treat you horrible. I too am a survivor of domestic violence, so I kind of understand how that plays a role in I love you. And a lot of people don't understand what I love you actually means. And a lot of times those three words cause a lot of scars instead of making somebody happy by it. That's how I came up with my books.
Okay, all right. Good, great. I love it. I love the responses. Fire Marshall. So you already started saying that you were writing, you know, the erotic poetry or whatever. But with this title, I mean, was it easy? Or, you know, because it would seem, okay, I'm writing about erotic poetry. It would just seem like I would just entitle it, you know, have that in there. Was it easy to come, to come to that decision or?
You know what? It wasn't easy. It was something that just happened as I talked with my book coach about the contents of the book, which we know is erotic poetry. And wanting it to be a name that would, would stand out for one. When I thought about the contents, the fact that it's erotic poetry and my poems are written in the form of stories. So that's how we came about with the name Pornotry. Because of course, we know that porn is something that a lot of people look at. Maybe there are porn magazines and so forth. Well, this is not really that. But it's just a play on the word to show that there are poems that are written in the form of stories.
So Pornotry. Okay, that's very creative. I like that. She'll make you think. You know, I'm gonna throw this in here as well, because you mentioned about you're part of the church. I'm not sure, I can't remember what, you know, position or whatever you hold. But was that a conflict for you or how bad of a conflict was it if it was?
Yes, it was a conflict and it was a big reason why I originally was not going to even publish. I happened to meet Zane. I don't know if you're familiar with her. But she was very popular throughout the United States and the world for her erotic novels. I had the pleasure of meeting her last year and joining her writing group. She poured a lot into me and she and I have sort of similar backgrounds in that her dad was a theologian and her mother was an educator and she did not want them to know what she was writing. She hid that from them for years under her pen name, but then found out that people were using her pen name and making money. So she had to expose that and kind of show who she was. And there was a big exposé or article in, I think, the New York Times back then. And she knew that her parents would know at that point, so she finally told them what she was doing. But she is not what some people may perceive. They, people have all sorts of perceptions about someone who would write an erotic novel, thinking, oh, that this, they have a picture in their mind about what this person must look like and how they must carry themselves and so forth and so on. But if you ever met her and saw her, you would think she wrote that? She is a very conservative woman. She is an introvert. But she is very knowledgeable and she does a lot more than erotic novels. And so it's been an honor to get to know her and know her story. And I decided that, hey, this is something that I'm able to do. I believe that the, the words inside are entertaining, it's funny, it's relatable. And I think that it can also be beneficial to some. I even have a little part in there called stiletto tips and soft whips to give people, married couples, some things that they can do to help spice up a relationship using Pornotry. So I think the book has some benefits as well as just entertainment and pleasure to it.
Oh, okay, all right. Are you guys' interests piqued yet? Listen, I love it. I love it. You know, you know, sometimes, I don't know, you know, depending upon if we're in the church, maybe have positions in the church or something like that. Something like this is not necessarily gonna be, we just dive into, right? We still have those, should I, should I not? But okay, but you did it. When did this, when was this book published?
This was published in June of 24.
Okay, all right. Okay, so you had a year, a little bit over a year under your belt with this book. Okay, so what audience, Dr. Sheena, were you trying to and/or intending to reach with your book? Whether it's a certain age group or gender? Can you share that with us?
With Turning My Pain Into Purpose, with that book, it was more of anybody that is dealing with some type of trauma, grief, because the stories are grief, miscarriage, divorce, domestic violence, even mothers that are dealing with kids with disability. So it's kind of broadened variety of different type of pain. You know, because a lot of times we sit and don't talk about a lot of things. And that's kind of related back to my name, the lady behind the mask. And you know, a lot of times we sit behind these masks. So my goal is to focus on people that might be sitting uncomfortably behind some things. And, you know, let them understand that there are other people dealing with the same thing that you might be dealing with. And, you know, it's okay to get uncomfortable and, you know, learn different things and figure out how to work on who we are to become the better version of ourselves and take out, walk into our purpose and know that you're dope.
Okay, all right. So yours is open, basically. That's, that's good. So can you answer that question for me, Shontae? I don't want to assume.
But can you, can you repeat the question if you don't mind?
Whether or not, which, which audience were you intending on initially for your book to reach?
I was wanting to reach the women that consider their self-broken. Because just like she said, a lot of us don't realize we look at somebody else's life and don't know their story and don't, don't realize that they too have experienced a lot of pain. So I was trying to reach some of the women that were broken, but also men as well. Because I've had men read my book as well, because men sometimes don't understand the pressures that they put on women that can cause women to also be hurtful. There's hurtful things that they do. So my focus is both men and women. I wanted to, as far as age range, teenagers on a. I did not realize when I wrote the book, I felt like my book was for my healing when I wrote it. But once it got published and it was selling, the amount of women that came to me and said, I thought I was alone in this. I did not realize that I was able to relate to so much in the book. So it really, it was for, I mean, it was, it was for both men and women, but more women bought it than men because of the title. And so that's why you shouldn't judge a book by its cover.
Right, right.
Because you really don't know what's inside till you read it. And the men that did read it would always come and say, I did not realize that's the amount of pressure we put on a woman. Yes.
Wow. I love it. I love it. And that's why I asked you, because I didn't want to assume that it was just for women. And I wanted to see, you know, who you were really trying to reach, because again, they have a, the men have a responsibility in it as well.
Women, we are always trying to fix our outside up for a man. Not even realize, and they don't even realize that we're broken and hurt in the inside.
That is such a deep concept. It really is. It really is. Wow. Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Okay, Fire Marshall.
Yes.
Who were you intending on targeting? Once you finally decide, okay, I'm gonna take my little writings that I have and put it into a book. Who did you, who were you thinking about in terms of audience for this book to reach?
First of all, though, anyone who is, who is interested in that genre, obviously. But also married couples. From having conversations with people, lots of married people, married women. There seems to be some things missing and there seems to be just such a dryness to relationships that it's like, maybe they need some ideas, maybe they need some, some things that will pique their interest and get them to explore one another even more. I hear all of these stories about hangups, a lot of inhibitions and all of these different things in marriages. These are the people who have carte blanche. We all know what the Bible says about what we should not do and what's forbidden. But these people who have an open door in the sexual arena are not, are not using it and looking at various things and, and saying, oh, well, no, that's this and that's that. And so I thought this could be a nice tool for them to use. And one of the suggestions I gave was for them to read to one another some of these things for an hour and see where it takes them. I think that it could be extremely beneficial in that way. And so that was one of the main audiences I wanted to.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thanks for sharing that. Now, let me, let me ask you, each of you. What is your passion? Is your passion what you write, have written about or is it something else? Dr. Sheena?
Well, mine definitely is what I write about. It's about inspiration and empowerment. Because you know, back in 2019, this journey started because I had to unmask myself after going through trauma of domestic violence. Plus, I don't look like my story of dealing with six different health conditions. So to be able to inspire, empower and motivate one soul at a time, I love it. You know, to let people know that they worship power, to let people know that they matter, to let people know that, you know, loving yourself is not selfish. Yes, it's my passion. It's my mission.
Okay. Before I get to the other two asking the same question, I want to interject and let you guys know if you're just not joining us. You are tuned in to the third and final segment of the Distinguished Author Guild nominees interviews. And we've placed them in our Authors Unite to Get Caught in a Net segment. We are talking to them. We have, we started at the beginning of this month. Third, when, September 3rd, rather, was the first segment. We did another segment last week. 12 noon and 6 PM and today is our final one. We will, so we will have another, or the last one on this evening at 6 o'clock. So this afternoon, of course, we're featuring authors, Shontae Conyers, author Dr. Sheena and author Fire Marshall on this afternoon and talking to them about their books. You know, how the books came about. You know, I like to kind of get a little background, you know, and understanding, you know, where was your mind at when you wrote the books? And so this is what we're talking with them about on today and of course, celebrating the fact that they are nominees for the Distinguished Author Guild 2025. So let's see, Fire Marshall, can you talk about your passion?
Well, I am an all-around creative. I am an abstract artist. Well, I am an all-around creative. I am um an abstract artist. I'm a songwriter, an award-winning songwriter at that. I uh have written other things. I write all types of poetry, inspirational poetry, poetry about life, just whatever inspires me. But I have to say that out of all of the things that I do, writing is my passion. I find that I'm able to affect lives through my writing. For example, I wrote a poem. I heard a story from this lady, her daughter, she had found out her daughter was pregnant. Um she was only fifteen years old. The family didn't know she was pregnant. They found out when she was five months. And the girl was gonna give the baby up for adoption. She didn't want them to know. And so the mother was extremely upset about that. And I was just inspired and wrote a poem called What Would Have Happened? And it talks about what would have happened if I would have given you away. You could have ended up, you know, with some family that didn't really love you and you could have been abused and all of these different things could have happened in your life if I had given you away. You know, so you need to think twice about giving your child away. But what I didn't know is that the next day, this lady was gonna bring this child to work with her. And she made her read that poem. Well, the girl changed her mind. She kept the baby and they allowed her family to help support her. And so that was when I really discovered the power in the words that we share in our books. And so whatever I write, I have a passion for it. Uh I have a purpose for it. And I just believe that it is meant for others. I thank God for the gift and I, I'm glad that I am able to do things that inspire, that encourage, and even entertain other people.
Beautiful. I get goose, goosebumps when you mention that. That's, that's beautiful. Um there is power in our words, spoken or written. Love it, I love it. Alright, uh Arthur Shante, come on. What about your passion?
My passion is to help people overcome. I just, I just wanna help women in general. God told me my purpose a long time ago was to serve, even though it is writing, but also to serve. I just wanna help women overcome. A lot of times we forget who we are because we gain titles like wife and mother and sister and friend, and that we forget that we were an individual with goals and aspirations and things that we wanted to do before we gained the title. And so I just wanna help women, help them find theirselves. It's okay to be a mom and find your purpose. It's okay to be a wife and establish your own goals and go after things. I just, I wanna be an inspiration to show people that these things can be done while accomplishing your goals and walking in your purpose. You can still hold all those titles. I just wanna show people that you can overcome, no matter what happens in your life. That, that is just a chapter, that's not your whole story, and that we have control to rewrite our story despite what we went through before. You, you can always start over. There's never um a age limit for anything. The world makes you think that you can't get married at sixty. The world thinks you can't have kids at this certain age. But in life, you can do whatever you wanna do. It's as long as you still wake up. I mean, God is still giving you a purpose to do what you are called to do. It's okay to take a step back from it. I mean, I took a step back from writing for a minute and now I'm back in it. It's okay to do that cuz sometimes you have to take a step back to regroup and to sometimes find yourself again. And I just wanna inspire and encourage people to just, no matter what happens, cuz you always have roadblocks and obstacles, but you just have to keep going.
Beautiful, beautiful. You guys are really sharing some great um insight on today and I appreciate it. And I'm sure those who will uh come back and watch will be uh inspired as well. So let's talk about this uh Distinguished Author Guild uh nomination process. And tell me what the nomination means to you. Anybody can start.
Well, it means a lot to me. I am excited. Like I said, I wrote my first book in twenty seventeen and then my second one. It got released in twenty twenty one after COVID. It means a lot to me. This is not my first awards. I actually uh received awards from APA Books out of Chicago as well, uh to Neil Jackson. So and I was not able to receive my second book. Please don't say you, no, no, my second book, please don't say you love me. I actually was not able to go receive that award, so she had to send it to me because I had COVID. But this means a lot, especially with me taking a break and putting my pen down for a while. The podcasts that I have been on have really inspired me, the women that um have been nominated and the ambassadors have really encouraged me because I, like I said, took a minute and set my pen down to figure out, is this what I'm really supposed to be doing? But when your books are awarded, yeah, then they're nominated. That lets me know that, yes, I am doing exactly what I'm supposed to be doing. So it means a lot to me.
Beautiful. Oh, I had no idea that you were connected with Neil Jackson. Okay.
Yes, most of my books won an award through her, her program.
And what year was that?
Twenty eighteen for Being Pretty is Hard Work and twenty twenty one for Please Don't Say You Love Me.
Okay, I've attended like a couple of her, wait, one, two, two of her, her award shows. And I was just trying to connect.
Go to the last, like I said, I get to go to the one right after COVID cuz I had COVID, but she sent my award to me and then but I was at the, that was my first time um that my book won with her.
Beautiful, beautiful. Alright, that's monumental. That's a good thing. Okay, um Fire Marshall?
Yes. You know, the Distinguished Authors Guild is absolutely a, a godsend. I and Je- Gina and I were talking the other day and we couldn't remember how we even met. But when, when I entered my book and then won, I was just so surprised. I, I believe in myself. I believe that I have a gift. But I don't know, it's like when you win an award for something you've done, it's so surreal. It's like, really, me, I won? And so I, it is absolutely fabulous. It is encouraging, it's empowering. And those are all of the things I feel that the Distinguished Authors Guild is doing for authors and uh really making us want to continue to write.
Yeah.
So it's wonderful.
Beautiful, beautiful. Okay, Dr. Sheena?
Well, you know, I've been doing Distinguished Author Guild for a few years now, so this is like family. So it's always great to come back home. I won in twenty twenty four, no, it was twenty twenty three for um Masking in My Brokenness Anthology uh project. But it's just, it's always great to be involved, meet new authors, network, just being able to know that, you know, your words are hitting on some inspiration for other people that you've never knew you might needed to inspire. You know, it gives you another platform, more people to network and collab with and just inspire and continue to motivate each other to continue to grow.
Beautiful, yeah. Cuz it, it's, it really is a, a community, a family. Just uh that, that particular foundation and, and like you, many of you have said already that it, it makes you feel comfortable, you feel, you know, you wanna push for it, maybe wanna write another book or what have you. Um but to get that encouragement um from others that look like you, um you know, it's, I believe it's, it's very important, um critical. Um and it's a blessing. So I, I just wanted to, you know, hear how you felt about uh being in that particular community and what the nomination meant to you. So thank you for that. Um you, when you introduced yourselves, you mentioned about families and uh children. Talk to me about your supporters. How, you know, instrumental they are in your lives and or your naysayers.
Well, I will start on that. Let me tell you something. It is amazing how, and I, I will say this as a believer and um just having conversation with other believers and so forth. Sometimes the church is the most judgmental. That, that you can get. I'm, I'm telling you, um it's amazing how people will sneak and go get your book and read it. But then talk about the fact that you wrote it. And I, I don't know, when I, when I really thought about it, I started thinking, you know what? I am not going to allow my gifts to be stifled by judgment, by condemnation, by any of those things. I know that I'm gifted. I know that I am a beautiful person. I love people. I have really ministered to a lot of people. And if this is just another way or entry way for me to meet some more people, you never know what could happen. But those relationships, family members. Um there is one family member who has read some of my work and yet makes those little remarks, those little negative remarks. You know, um you know, she's, yeah, she, she wrote this book, but did you know she was a prophetess? Not saying that in a, a, a measure of admiration, but as judgment.
Yeah.
And um I just got to the place where I, I have to silence those voices. And I silence them by continuing to operate in the gifts that God placed inside of me. Um so it can be very difficult because if, had I listened to those voices and thought about all of those things that happened, I would have never published this book. And we cannot allow people to stop us from doing what God has called us to do, no matter what it is. Someone is always gonna have something negative to say.
Right.
But you're the one that's, that's doing it. You're the one who's prospering. And you're the one who's reaching people because of the gift that God has given you.
Beautiful. Okay, so your supporters?
Lots of supporters, mainly in my community. Um my friends, a lot of my coworkers. I live in a community that's very diverse and artistic. I'm a part of the art district out here. And so we've done uh programs where we have poets and storytellers. Um and so they got a chance to hear some of my work. I was a little nervous about it because of the demographics. There were mostly older Caucasian people in the audience. I didn't know how they were gonna receive what I was saying. But I went ahead, one of my, the board members said, look, just do it. So I did. And I was amazed. These people loved it. They loved it. They encouraged me constantly. They were the first ones to purchase the book. It was awesome. And I get that type of support all the time. Um from mostly friends and from the community. Um and most of my sisters, I have five sisters, or four sisters, rather. So um it's, you know, I get a lot of good support. And of course, the Distinguished Authors Guild.
Beautiful, beautiful. Yeah, I'm glad you did it too because guess what? Just like you say, you started writing on your own before you went and got it published. That was something within you. So you never know what other people are, you know, what's within them and that they will connect to. So I'm, I'm glad you did that as well. Beautiful. Alright, yeah, cuz people will surprise you. They will surprise. Yeah.
Oh, I have a lady to buy the books. A member of the same church. I want the book, I want the book, bought five books on the spot.
Wow.
And then stopped speaking to me.
Well, that could be for a variety of reasons, right? The uh, well, and I won't speculate, but.
But no, I, I, I won't either. I just said, oh, well, well, she bought it, so.
I know, that's right. You got the money now. I shouldn't have said that. Lord forgive me. Okay, let's see. Buddy Gil is here. He says, good afternoon to everyone. Thanks for coming in, buddy. We appreciate you. And then another author, I believe I have her on this evening, Farin McLamore, says hello queens. Back at you, Farin. Thanks so much for joining us. Uh Buddy Gil has a comment here. He says, wow, Fire Marshall hit a few heads ups, uh upside their heads talking about the support or lack of it from with um within your warm market, your family and friends. The secret envy or jealousy. See, I was gonna say that. I was gonna say that, that last sentence, see, it was either secret envy or jealousy. But uh, yeah, that's okay. You're right, she did hit a few heads upside the head with.
I will interject that sometimes it's a person's own fear. Sometimes people have fears and they try to project those off on you.
Yeah.
Um and so I'm just glad that I'm not a, a person who is easily fearful.
That's good, that's good, very good. And that, that's um good to pass on to others. Okay, uh who, who wants to go next? Talking about your supporters and or your naysayers.
Well, I always tell people that if I waited for support, I would probably be, not be where I am in life. I would not be anywhere if I waited for support.
Wow.
Because most of my support, honestly, has came from strangers, people I don't know, most of my support. And like Fire Marshall said, the people that did buy my book, it was more or less just wanna be nosy and see what was wrote, what was said in there. I was even told, why would you share your story? Um this is embarrassing. Yes, I mean, yeah. And so support, at one time, I used to say, I don't know what support is cuz I don't have it. But God sent people in to support me. Uh distinguished au- authors, just people from, I've co-authored before, so I was able to, I've co-authored two books. So I was able to, you know, connect with other women that are just as powerful. Uh I think for me, support is an issue, though. I think it sometimes has a, it does like, uh what's the word I wanna use? Leave me, sometime it leaves me stagnant.
Okay.
Yeah, sometime leaves me stagnant, but then here comes, my children are twenty seven and twenty one. And so normally they are very encouraging. Yes, they are very, very encouraging. They have helped me through um some of my stagnant, you know, like seasons in my life. That is an issue. I'm with Fire Marshall. Fear does come upon me, but God always says, this always sticks with me, that God doesn't give you a spirit of fear, but of love, peace, and a sound mind. So um a wise woman told me years ago that if you fear it, you should probably be moving in it cuz that's probably your destiny. So that always, so normally when something fear comes over me, I normally try to move in it because clearly that's something I'm supposed to be doing, which is something God gave me. But support, oh Lord, I'm telling you, if, if I waited for support, I, Lord knows, I would be nowhere in life. I wouldn't have went to college, I wouldn't have wrote two books. I, I mean, I, yeah. Because the naysayers are always louder than your support. And people have to understand that, always. People always are always, always gonna have something negative to say. And just like Fire Marshall said, most of the time, they're just projecting their fears onto you because they wanna share their story. I, I've had people reach out to me and say, hey, I wanna write a book. Um what did you do? How did you start? And I always tell them, the first thing to do is to pick up the pen and start writing. And so one lady said, I wanna write my own story. I said, okay, we'll start writing. But as she started writing, she did not realize that in order to heal from the pain, you have to relive it. And so a lot of people don't realize, it's like God, when I wrote my book, it was like God was opening up sores and pouring salt on them. Because I had to go through them. You cannot heal unless you go through it. And so she started writing and she stopped. She was, because she said, I can't do this. I can't do this. And I, I, I got, I understood it, but people don't understand, yes, writing is a gift, but there is also other things that comes with it.
That's good stuff right there. Ooh, you said a whole word. Uh my goodness. Uh I saw you, Dr. Sheena, you, you agree with. I am. I'm Vegas, I'm telling you, 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 you hit it on the head. That, oh my goodness, you hit it on the head because you, you're thinking that, you know, you're writing and you're writing for others and for other, you know, cuz you want them to buy it. So you're writing this book for them, but you have to realize it's, it's, it's first to you.
And that's what I told people. When I wrote my book, my book was for my healing. I asked God when I wrote my book, if I inspire one person, then I've done what you asked me to do. But I was doing this for me, not even knowing that I was gonna help thousands.
Beautiful, absolutely beautiful. Okay, uh Dr. Sheena, come on.
Naysayers, I call it the glow up after the grow up. Naysayers, I call it the glow up after the grow up.
Okay.
Because the thing about it is, what I went through, it was my growth and I glued and I, and you know, for the haters that see it. I glow on them. So it was my glow up after the grow up. They ignite me to be better. What you do is speaking my name, you make others want to go buy it. So you're helping me, promote me. So thank you. So I say thank you to the haters. And so my supporters, you know, like I said. You would think it would be family. It's not. My tribe came from everywhere else in the world. And I just, you know, if it's one or if it's two hundred. I perform, I speak, and I, you know, ignite and encourage as if it's billions. So I just, everything as a motivation. You know, I remember going to an event and heard uh the speaker ET. He said, you know, I can, I will. And that's always been my theme. I can, I will, and I'm going to do it and. I'm not going to dim my light regardless if you like me or if you don't. Because if I fear speaking my story, then I'm then neglecting the person that needs to hear it. If I fear not walking in my purpose, I then neglect the person that needs it. And if I fear of not speaking out, then somebody I've neglected to not help.
Wow. Woo. Hmm, okay, I was trying to grab each of those. I love it though. No, I mean, but it, it is so true. You know, because if we, we just keep it within, I mean, you're not going to, you're not going to help. Others.
You know. I first told my story of DV, the person that actually did it, they kept saying, oh, you changed. Stop telling the story. No, I'm not going to stop talking. You don't want me to talk because it's about you. I don't mention your name, but you don't want me to talk because it's about you.
Wow.
You don't want to sit in your mess.
Okay.
But I'm comfortable with it and I'm not ashamed or judged by it. It happened. So now I'm helping someone else that's walking through it.
Okay, right. All right, I'm glad you had the strength to, to even stand up. You know, because sometimes you talk about stuff that other people did to you. They don't want, they don't want you to say it. They don't want you to talk about it. And I'm glad you didn't pull back, you know, even after they responded and, and were saying, you, you're changing. Why are you sharing this? Uh, hopefully they'll get their healing, whoever they are.
But I'm healing one soul at a time, so I did what I needed to do.
That's right. That's right. That's so true. Oh, man, this is so great. I have real, I'm really enjoying you ladies. And your responses and uh your journeys, your books, your projects. Um, and you, you are very inspirational to many who are watching and will watch. So let me ask you this as we're wrapping up. Um, a, a couple things I want to ask. What difference do you endeavor to make? Um, whether it's with these books um that have been nominated or with. Uh, anything else that you've worked on your projects. Uh, what do you endeavor to uh do? What, what do you want to see come out of it? Dr. Sheena?
Well, I've already kind of, you can, you can say, as six years in, I've uh seen a lot. That's came out of it. You know, from my kids telling me I'm the Ashiro. To getting emails of people that call me the angel for just speaking my story. You know, the divine of being able to walk in this purpose and, you know, someone that's going through what I've been through. Or maybe dealing with the disease that I may be dealing with and they need some. Expertise of how to be an advocate at the doctors, because a lot of times, you know, especially of people of color. They like to think you're trying to get meds or you're trying to be delusional about what's going on for you. So. Being able to be the strong mind and strong body for someone else to help them, be able to speak life into what they're doing. Is all I want to do is to give people power, power in their mouth, power in their voice, empower in themselves.
Love it. That's why she's Dr. Sheena. What difference do you endeavor to make, Fire Marshall?
The difference that I endeavor to make is to encourage people to use their gifts for others. To inspire others and to know that you do have a gift. You need to be heard. There are so many writers who are sitting on their pens. From babies to the most elderly adults that we can think of. And they have stories that we all could benefit from, that we need to hear. Some of them are. Words of empowerment, some are to encourage us, some are just inspirational. And then some of them are just downright funny. You know, people have gifts that they could um. Reach children, teenagers, and so forth. I, I write all types of genres, uh self-help. Um inspirational journals, poetry. And as I continue to write, I want to inspire people to jump in the writing pool. There's enough room for all of us. Whatever it is that I'm not writing, I'm sure that you could be writing that story. Be vulnerable. I want people to learn how to be vulnerable. Because it's, it's in your vulnerability that people are going to get help.
Yeah.
They're not going to get help by us sitting back acting like we're all that and we, you know, have never been through anything and. We, you know, are perfect people. That, that is just not the case. I'm sorry. Uh, I've been through all types of things. I have still growing to this day, still learning to this day. And I, I hope that something I share will inspire others. Um, I want people to enjoy their lives. And um I think that they can do that when they read my books.
All right now. All right. Fire, y'all got a fire. Fire Marshall is here. All right, uh Shante, you want to wrap us up? Um, if you tell us what you endeavor, what difference you endeavor to make?
I want to, I want to make a difference in people's life by teaching people how to live in their truth. Just living your truth, whatever your truth is, whatever your life looks like, just live in that. Because living in your truth is freedom. Yeah, bondage is and chains is broken when you live in your truth. When you accept your background of where you may have came from. Yes, you may have came from that background, but that doesn't define who you are. And once we learn to live in our truths and learn that those things are not who we are, the freedom that comes with it. Yes, I encourage people to write, even if you don't want to publish a book, just write, just journal, let it out and let it go. Because once you let it out and let it go, you find who you truly are. Because a lot of times, we. We find out who we are, well, who we think we are because of what somebody told, told us we are, but that's not who we are. So I just want to teach people to just be free, live, just be free. It is, um. It's just rewarding when you live free and you really find out who you are and you are able to walk in your purpose.
I love it. I love it. All right, I'm going to read this last comment on um. Here, Buddy Gil. Congratulations to each of you ladies on your published books and journeys. Continued success to each of you. God's grace and blessings.
Uh, buddy.
Yeah, he's a, he's a really cool guy. He really is. Um, and I want to say congratulations to each of you on your nomination um and what you have accomplished thus far. We're just praying that God would just continue to bless each of you. Uh, and I want to encourage you guys, I'm going to put in the comments section the information for the. Distinguished Authors Guild um. Uh, award ceremony. It will be held in, now if you guys in the Midwest. Okay, you can come to this award ceremony or, you know, many of the authors are going to be flying in. So get your ticket, get your ticket. Come on, you can come on in. November seventh, two thousand twenty five. At Theater Forty Seven in Park Forest, Illinois. The link for the Eventbrite um where you can get your tickets is underneath. So make sure you guys uh get your tickets today if you haven't gotten them yet. I mean, there's entertainment at these award shows, you know, in addition to recognizing the authors. Um, and the nominees, and then of course the winners will be announced. But Gina Gadsden and her crew, I believe Dr. Stevens is working with her and she has others that are in the background, Greg Gray. That are helping her with this particular, um, and I see you guys over here on Instagram. That are helping with this particular event. They put everything into it and it's so nice. It's beautiful how she, you know. They, they lay it out rather. So make sure you get your tickets. These beautiful women, I hope, I don't know. I'll, all three of you today will be there. Will you be there this year?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, all right. And uh, you know, of course, if they win, they just have to ship the, the award to whoever is not in, in attendance. But it's a beautiful, beautiful event and I, I want to encourage you guys to make sure that you participate in it. Um, some have come out as guests and then the following year they return as authors or nominees, you know. Um, but it, it, it's just a wonderful thing. And I believe if I'm not mistaken, the proceeds from the tickets will go towards scholarships. I believe they're still doing that. And it, it, I just, that, that's just wonderful to me. I, you know, we need to support our, you know, those who are in school. Our, our young people. Sometimes the older people are in school too, but we just thank God for. For those who will benefit from this. So um Fire Marshall, Dr. Sheena, Shante. I thank you all so much for taking time out with me on today, coming in here and talking about your books, your projects, your lives. And being inspirational to each and every one of us. So I appreciate you again uh for coming in. And I thank each of you on Facebook, Instagram, YouTube. And I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to recognize your names over here, but I thank you all so much. Uh, for coming in and sharing with us. And again, you can still tag individuals into this particular. Segment so that they will go back and watch it in its entirety. Um, but please, I encourage you all to join me again this evening. This evening I will round out this uh Distinguished Author Guild uh interviews with, I have. Uh Shayna Jenkins, Farin McLamore, Natalie Murphy, the romance uh woman herself. Dr. Carolyn Stevens and Patricia Wallace. Um, they will round us out on this evening with the final interviews. And um you don't want to miss it. So six PM Central Standard Time on this evening. And until then, I, oh, thanks, Farin. She says she hopes to see everybody November seventh. So you all come out and come on out, come on out. And I pray that all goes well. So thank you again. Um, I will see you guys later on this evening and until then.